Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council for Monday, December 4th, 2017, and ask our city recorder, please call roll.
Counselor Ryan.
She's excused for the moment.
Counselor Freeman.
Here.
Counselor. Oh, excuse me.
Counselor Ryan will be here a little late.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Freeman.
Here.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
And Youth Counselor Hernandez.
Here.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. So, under special orders of business tonight, we have the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association Annual Report. Do you want to do a staff report or invite them up? All right, so from the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, I think I saw Mr. Girloff.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come on down? And Colleen Bush, and I believe you're the Chair and Vice Chair? Vice, all right. Your vice.
She has all the vices.
And for the record, Counselor, Colleen Bush is also a representative director from the Salem Kaiser Transit, so glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Persons, and hard-working city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to report on the past year from the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. It's been a rather, I want to say uneventful year, but it has had its ups and downs, and we are getting some traction as we speak. We started with basically a group that didn't know a whole lot about neighborhood associations, and it's taken a while to kind of find out who and what we are, what we do, what we can do, and what we can't do. So, it's been a learning process for everyone. So, we are coming together very well. We are networking like crazy. We have a Director on the Transit Board. We have members on the Traffic, Pedestrian Traffic Safety, Kaiser United, Southeast Kaiser Community Center. We're involved with Wettel Elementary with their, not only their reading program where they honor 300 students for meeting certain goals every, I think it's every month, isn't it?
About that, yeah.
And they need 25 dozen cookies, so if anybody out there in the viewing audience would like to donate to the school, that's not within their budget, so they have to go outside to sponsor that. It's a great thing. If you ever get a chance, I would suggest you attend it if you ever get a chance. It's a wonderful thing. Our mayor wrote a letter one time. You would have thought they got a letter from the President. They were quite thrilled with the whole process, and we're very honored to have you take the time and do that for them. They were touched by it. We're, I'm going to participate in a stakeholders meeting here this Wednesday with the Planning Department to work on some grants. We had some recent concerns with some properties down in the Philbert area, and we are starting to make some traction down there. The property on Jetto and Leo has been cleaned up now, and we have many, many very happy neighbors. In fact, they came to our meeting, which is a new plus for us, getting some of those people involved with us. They've been vocal but not joining us. So, that was a great thing. We're still concerned with kids' safety. Due to a misnomer in the minutes, we didn't get a motion from our last meeting correct, and we're going to be coming back to you with a no parking on BB and part of Arnold crossing the park there. Cars block both sides to pick up the kids. We have an ice cream vendor that parks there regularly that adds to the problem, and then we have kids weaving through the cars with less than a lane, pinches at the corner. It's a real nightmare at times. So, we'll be, and we have the, we've gotten the homeowner to join us. He's written a letter and saying he, you know, has the use, doesn't bother using his property. He's all in favor. He's tired of being scared watching the kids like I am go through there, because most of them are watching their phones like most kids, and they siphon through their things without any vision concerns at all. And, I mean, you say it's up to people to see them, and it's been a couple of close ones. I've seen kids get bumped. I've never seen one get knocked down, but I've seen them bumped, so that's a concern to us, and we'll be coming back. We have a new member of our board, Martin Apear. He's been quite involved in that BB property down there. In fact, he's been the spearhead. He wants to start kind of a helping hands group. He's going to be looking at resources to put together a group to help people that have issues where they can't resolve them themselves, you know, stay in their home type of stuff. So, I'll be looking to do that again. We used to have a group back in the day when we had our other, the old neighborhood association, we always had a group that did that. We called them, what was it, Helping Buddies or something like that. Anyway, we'll be looking at some of those resources to put that together, and that'll be another program we'll be working on down in our neighborhood and looking for support. That's about all I have. Do you want to add to it?
Well, I do want to touch base on the Wettel Wolfie Award is this Friday at 2:00. They honor the students for reading a half hour every day for five days out of the week for a four-week period. So, that would be this weekend, and then the next one would not be until February because they start over again in January. And we've done a couple of other things. We helped with the Claggett Creek Watershed Council when they did the cleanup down there. Several folks joined in the party in getting rid of the trash. What else have we done? I think that's all I could think to add. Any questions? Counsel Reed.
Can I just add something? I just wanted to, for the record, to note again that we are changing our monthly meetings to the first Thursdays in the month, so we're hoping to get some more participation with that change. And those meetings, right now, we're going to be scheduled here at the Civic Center. So, again, if you are in the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood area, please join us.
That'll be starting in January.
Thank you. Yes.
And just so folks know who are watching, that all of our neighborhood associations, while they are targeted in terms of content toward their neighborhoods, they're all open to anybody in the community who wants to come and be a part of the program. So, what you're doing in your neighborhood and the presentations we get at West Kaiser and at GUBS are all different, so it's a great opportunity to come and meet people and exchange ideas about how we can keep Kaiser moving forward.
We look forward to having a conversation with anybody in the neighborhood. I mean, and we'd like to have more people involved, so we're speaking with a better voice for the entire neighborhood. Sometimes I feel a little uncomfortable speaking for the neighborhood when we're, you know, a group of six or eight meeting monthly, and I don't feel as comfortable as I would if we had more people involved.
Well, people are leading busy lives, as we all know, working and taking care of kids and doing life, but I really appreciate your dedication to the community and the partnerships that you're building.
And we appreciate the participation of the council and the Police Department and Kaiser Fire District. They all have representatives have come and spoken at our meetings. Chief Cowan, Chief Teague, our Code Enforcement has been there.
Parks.
Parks have come.
ODOT. We've had a number of folks.
Yep. So, we're just kind of, yeah, going at it. All right, are there any other questions? Counsel Freeman.
You, excuse me, mentioned, you know, cleaning up some yards in your neighborhood, and I know, I think they're still around. You haven't seen them much in the paper, the Men of Action, which are part of the Kaiser Chamber. And I see Matt Lawyer back there. I know he's part of that group as well as Bob Schalkeford. I know he's covering his face. And there's other, you know, people within Kaiser, but I would hope that you would reach out to that group as well for projects and at least keep them in the loop if there's some things, because that group is pretty resourceful to maybe help in your endeavors or find other resources for homeowners in the community as well.
Yeah, we have no desire to reinvent the wheel. We will take resources. We're more of a networking group than we are, you know, go out and, most of us are a little infirm now, and we don't go out and do as much as we used to back in the day. So, we're more looking at putting resources together and having those, because that's the hardest thing to do when you go down, is finding those resources. You know, you're not as mobile, it's hard to network at that time, and so if we had those resources and we knew where they were, we could better provide those for people, and that's kind of the goal. It isn't to actually, well, we will do some of the work, but let's not do it all ourselves by any means.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Ken and Colleen? Counsel President Parsons, would you like to put a motion on the table for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the report and extend recognition for another year to the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the report of the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association and extend recognition for an additional year. Comments? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you so much. Let us know how we can continue to help you in outreach in connection with the community.
You've done more than is expected already. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to committee reports, and we're going to start off with an ordinance. Amending the ordinance, creating a planning commission, amending ordinance 83-006, and ordinance number 2013-674. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. We have a couple of housekeeping measures here that are connected, both the ordinance and the resolution that follow it. The first one is the ordinance regarding the planning commission, and the second is regarding Traffic Safety Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee. It's my understanding, the recommendation is to add to these committees the opportunity for a youth counselor, and so that the planning commission, I think it's by state statute, I'm not certain, but for whatever reason, is by ordinance. Most of our committees are formed by resolution, but the planning commission is by ordinance. So, we have an ordinance to amend that, to add that position as a non-voting member. After the packet was finalized, I realized that the issue of actually appointing the youth counselors on the same agenda, and so because an ordinance normally takes 30 days to take effect without an emergency clause, I had a new version prepared this afternoon that is in front of you on the dais that has the emergency clause. It's not really, I was talking to the Counsel President Parsons and the mayor before the meeting, it's not really as amended. It's just to note on the motion that you are passing the version that is handed to you on the dais. That includes the emergency clause. And I'll go ahead, and I don't need to say anything further. It's the same with the resolution, Madam Mayor. It's a resolution for the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee. After, if there's no questions on the ordinance, you can immediately move to that and pass the resolution as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, let's go ahead and get started then with the item 8A. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be reading the bill, or the bill for the ordinance off the dais. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, amending the ordinance, creating a planning commission, amending ordinance number 83-006, and ordinance number 2013-674, declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, 2017, amending the ordinance, creating a planning commission, amending ordinance number 83006, and ordinance number 2013-674, declaring an emergency. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. And I think then, oh, we'll do the appointments at the end. So, that takes us to item 5B, a resolution, amending the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, amending R. 2012-2256, repealing R. 2014-2429. City Manager, I believe, was there anything additional?
No, Madam Mayor. It's the same idea, to add the youth counselor position to that committee.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a resolution, R. 2017, amending the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, amending resolution number R. 2012-2256, repealing resolution R. 2014-2429.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a resolution, R. 2017, amending the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, amending R. 2012-2256, repealing R. 2014-2429. Discussion? All in favor, oh, Counsel Freeman.
Sorry, so Shannon, on the other one, we had declaring emergency, but this one we don't?
Yes, so for counsel in the audience, the ordinances by state law have to have a 30-day effective date unless they include an emergency clause.
Okay, sorry.
And so, because it's a resolution, you'll see at the end it takes effect immediately, so that's the difference.
Perfect, thank you. You said that, so I apologize.
No, it's great to clarify, and this is all part of the efforts that we are doing to engage more of the youth on our committees and commissions. This has been a longtime goal of many of us on the council, and it's one of our short-term goals, and we're glad to have a teacher in the high school, Counselor Reed, help us with the recruitment and getting more youth voice on our city committees and commissions. So, we're so excited to get these very intelligent and insightful young people on our committees, so it's exciting. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 5C, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointments, Budget Committee, Parks Advisory Board, Kaiser Planning Commission, Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, and Committee Youth Liaison. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on November 16th to review the applications and interview candidates for openings on several city committees. Committee is recommending the following applicants for appointments. For Budget Committee, Keith Blair, Don Clark, Kevin Dial, to positions 3, 4, and 5 respectively. Park Advisory Board, David Loudon, Clint Holland, and Wayne Frey, to positions 5, 6, and 9 respectively. Kaiser Planning Commission, Matt Lawyer, to position number 1. Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, Joe Tillman and Pat Fisher, to positions 5 and 7 respectively. And Committee Youth Liaisons, Isaac Matthews, to Planning Commission and Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, and Brooke Ridgeway, to the Art Commission and Park Advisory Board. It is recommended City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee recommendation for these appointments. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council appoint the fall, oh, sorry, accept the nominations for the following, the applicants for the following appointments. Budget Committee, Keith Blair, Don Clark, Kevin Dial, to positions 3, 4, and 5. Parks Advisory Board, David Loudon, Clint Holland, and Wayne Frey, to positions 5, 6, and 9. Kaiser Planning Commission, Matt Lawyer, to position 1. Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, Joe Tillman and Pat Fisher, to positions 5 and 7 respectively. And to the Committee Youth Liaison, Isaac Matthews, to Planning Commission, Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, and Brooke Ridgeway, to the Arts Commission and Parks Advisory Board.
Second.
I'm not reading the whole thing. It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee to the Budget Committee, Parks Advisory, Kaiser Planning, Traffic Safety, Bike Ways Pedestrian, and the Committee Youth Liaisons. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent.
My tongue is getting tied tonight.
Yeah. Okay, fantastic. Public testimony this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. And we have five public hearings on the schedule tonight, really? That's what happens when we're coming up on the end of the year and the holidays. So, if you're here to talk to us about one of the public hearings, you should have signed in on one of the sheets in the back if you want to speak. If you're just here to listen, you don't have to sign in, of course. And then if you want to address this for public testimony, anybody who would like to do so is welcome to come forward at this time, and Tracy's gathering up. So, anybody want to speak under public testimony? All right, let's go ahead and move on then into the public hearings. The first one is item 7A, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Philip Street Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon, Herbert family. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. You may remember the Herbert Farms land use cases, zone change, comprehensive plan map change for the Herbert property that borders on Verta between Chumawa and Dearborn. As a part of that application and the council decision, there were a couple of conditions. One of the conditions was the lower, what's called the lower portion, that's the part that's kind of level with the creek, if you will, be deeded to the city. It's not really usable as development ground because it's in the floodplain. That has occurred, that property has been deeded to the city. The other condition was the street vacation of Philip Street, which is an undeveloped street that's been platted for years and years as an old, part of an old subdivision. It's pretty much more or less at the bottom of the hill, if you will, running north and south between Dearborn and Chumawa. Since that could never really be used because of its location in the floodplain, one of the conditions in the land use case was to have that vacated. So, the Herbert family went through that process with our assistance in terms of the notice and the different consents. So, two-thirds of the property, what's called the affected property, which is a hard-to-describe line, north and south and east and west of the vacated area, two-thirds of that area consented to the vacation, and then the abutting property owners consented. You might remember the council had that on a previous council agenda item. So, it is before you for public hearing tonight. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Kaiser Times, and signs were placed as required by state law at each end of the vacated area. And since the property, since the street really can't be used for any reason or developed, it's appropriate to vacate it, and the requisite signatures of the property owners and adjoining and affected properties have been submitted. So, the recommendation is to open the public hearing, make the determination with regard to the consents of the owners and the abutting owners, and unless there's questions, recommend that you pass the attached ordinance. The, there really is no question concerning the development of the property, it's simply vacating that unused area that never got built as a street. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we do, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Now, if there are any questions for staff on the staff report. Okay, and I sent you an email earlier today. Would this be the time to have that conversation?
Sure, and, and I'll open that. The mayor was concerned regarding any contacts that you folks might have made with regard to the Herbert property since the land use case was long over. I think arguably, and that's in terms of ex parte contacts, arguably, this is not a land use case. It is somewhat quasi-judicial in nature because there is an application, although ironically enough, we forced the applicant to apply as it was a condition of our land use decision as the city's. But if you have any contacts that are directly or indirectly connected, you want to disclose those at this time, that would be appropriate. Again, it's kind of borderline, it's not the typical ex parte kind of matter we would normally see in a regular land use application, but the mayor, with an overabundance of caution, asked me to look in that, and I felt it was appropriate to disclose those, so. So, Madam Mayor, you could go forward this time, and then any other counselors who want to chime in.
Okay, and in some of the substantive conversations on Nextdoor, there, and I think it was the Kaiser OR page, and I've sent copies, screenshots of those to the city attorney to review, and there were questions regarding the lower area, whether or not that would be built upon, and as has been announced, and I did discuss on there that that was coming to the city. And I got in my head that the Philip Street vacation had already happened, and so I had made some statements on there that it was already a done deal, which is not, that's what we're working on tonight. So, I want to make sure that I acknowledge that here, and if there was any concerns regarding those posts on Nextdoor or the Facebook Kaiser OR page, that I let folks know about that. I simply, I got ahead of myself on where we were in the process. I thought we'd already done it, but no, we had already given direction for the right-of-way to be vacated, so that would not be a street that would actually ever happen. So, just want to let folks know about that, and I know a number of people saw those posts, and I want to thank people who engaged in some very substantive and positive conversation regarding how that property was going to be used, especially concerns about the lower area, which we know is a favorite of ducks and geese and all things that swim. But I want to make sure that we all had that on the record. So, if anybody has any concerns about that, please make sure to voice that during the public hearing, this public hearing. Anybody else? All right. So, continuing on, I don't have anybody signed up for public testimony. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on the vacation of the Philip Street right-of-way? All right, seeing none. Okay, I'd like to go ahead then and close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance to vacate a portion of Philip Street Northeast Kaiser, Oregon, Herbert family.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance to vacate a portion of Philip Street Northeast Kaiser, Oregon, Herbert family. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. No street running through the field.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
That takes us to item 7B, a resolution forming the Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District, and a resolution and an ordinance then spreading the assessments to Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 18th, 2017, the city council adopted resolution R. 2017-2803, initiating Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting District, and directing the city engineer to make a survey and file a report. On November 6th, 2017, the city council approved the engineer's report and set a public hearing to consider remonstrances to the project and objections to proposed assessments. Notice of the public hearing stating the intention to form the district and to assess for the lighting improvements was published in the Kaiser Times and mailed to the property owners as required under City of Kaiser ordinance 94-278. In terms of fiscal impact, city initially pays street lighting expense to the utility company as it is billed throughout the year. The operating cost of the lights is then billed to the property owners on an annual basis, thereby recovering the city's cost for bills paid throughout the year. In addition, the bills include the cost of the city engineer's report in the first year and an administrative charge in the first and subsequent years to recover the city's cost for administering the lighting district. All funds are budgeted through the utility fund. It is recommended city council open the public hearing to first consider oral objections and written remonstrances to the formation of Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. If valid remonstrances of the owners of two-thirds of the land to be specially assessed for the lighting district are presented to the city council at the public hearing, it is recommended that you then close the hearing and suspend the formation of the district for six months. If remonstrances are not received, it is recommended that you close the public hearing and consider adoption of the resolution forming the lighting district, and then if you form the lighting district, consider adoption of the proposed assessment ordinance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there, oh, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any questions on the staff report? I have nobody signed up to, for public testimony on the Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to that issue? All right, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2017, forming the Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a resolution forming the Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, spreading assessments to Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Is that the same one I just read?
This is the ordinance part.
No, that's right. That's right, spreading assessments, I said that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, spreading the assessments to Pine Crest Edition Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 7C, a resolution forming the Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District, and an ordinance spreading the assessments to Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Like to open the public hearing? City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is the exact same information as just provided for the last lighting district, so pretend that I'm reading this, and instead insert Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Thank you.
All right, copy, paste. Any questions for staff? And I don't have anybody signed up to address the council on the Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on the formation of this district? All right, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, forming the Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a Resolution R. 2017, forming the Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance spreading the assessments to the Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance spreading assessments to Galena Court Street Lighting Local Improvement District. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us to item 7D, a resolution authorization for supplemental budget police services fee. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, hang on, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
There would.
Madam Mayor, City Council, in July 2017, the city council imposed a police services fee with an effective date of November 2017. The police services fee will be used to add and equip five additional police officers. It's anticipated that this fee will bring in $410,000 during fiscal year 2017-18. The fee will be recognized in a newly created police services fee as required by the resolution adopting the fee. And then the funds will then be transferred to the general fund to provide a consolidated police department operating budget. It's recommended, staff recommends that the city council receive testimony, close a public hearing, deliberate the issue, after which staff recommends the city council approve the attached resolution authorizing a supplemental budget to recognize and appropriate the police services fee. This is the point at which you authorize us to actually spend the money. We have started collecting it. It was on the November bills, and we're starting to see the proceeds come in. Based off of the preliminary results, the $410,000 is gonna be pretty, pretty darn close to what we'll receive during this fiscal year. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right, are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none. I have nobody signed up for testimony on the supplemental budget police services fee. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget police services fee.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget police services fee. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us to item 7E, a resolution authorization for supplemental budget, the park services fee, and rental house income. Like to open the public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
I wish this was a copy and paste, but it's not exactly. It's very similar, but not exactly as similar to the, the police services fee. In July 2017, the city council imposed a park services fee with an effective date of November 2017. The park services fee will be used to add and equip two additional park employees, increasing the ongoing park repairs, maintenance, and provide for capital projects outlined in the parks master plan. In addition to that, we've also changed how we're dealing with a park rental property. We're gonna also be receiving an additional $11,000 in income associated with the rental property that we had not anticipated at the time the budget was created. The additional income is dedicated for park fund expenditures. So, we're gonna do two things tonight. We're gonna recognize both those pieces, sources of income, and appropriate those funds, in addition to transferring all of the existing park appropriations that are currently housed in the general fund, and transfer those to a newly created park services fund. We're kind of taking an opposite approach as we did with the police fee, where we moved the funds from the police fee fund to the general fund. We're gonna move all of the park expenditures to the newly created park services fund. The reason we're gonna do this is approximately two-thirds of the park budget is now funded through the park services fee. So, that's a significant change in how the parks have been funded in the past. So, we're gonna consolidate all of the appropriations into that budget so that we can have one clean view as far as what's going on with the parks department. So, with that, I recommend receive any public testimony, deliberate, and if you so choose, adopt both of the resolutions that are attached. The first one is to supplement, is to recognize and appropriate the park service fee of $410,000 and the park rental house revenue of $11,000. The second resolution is to transfer the existing park department resource appropriations from the general fund to the park services fund. So, that was a mouthful, and with that, if you have any questions?
So, one point of clarification, one of the things that was extremely important to everyone in the parks fee discussion was to ensure there was no supplanting, that collecting the fee would not put the existing parks budget allocation into other services. And by putting them all into the park services fund, it helps clarify that the existing budget allocation plus the fee, those dollars are going exactly where we said they were gonna go, which is to the maintenance and repair of our parks.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. We're doing this because it's a much cleaner way to show that we're giving at least that two and a half percent of the general fund resources to the parks program. In actuality, we're actually higher than three percent most of the time in any given year, but it'll be very much a clearer line to be able to show that we're not supplanting any of the funds.
Okay, and then just so folks know, we're also, the parks board is in the process of going through a prioritization of the repairs and replacements necessary in our 19 parks, and that is going to come to us probably January-ish as a recommendation. I'm looking at a member of the parks board, Matt Lawyer, so, no, I think we're good right now unless you want, but I just want to kind of give some context to folks, so probably around January. Are there any questions for staff on the staff report? Okay, and so, public testimony, I don't have anyone signed up to address the council on the park services fee. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on the supplemental budget to use the funds for our parks? Okay, seeing none, then I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget, park services fee, and rental house income.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for, sorry, Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget, park services fee, and rental house income. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget, park services fee.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget, parks services fee. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. We got through the public hearings, all right. Let's go on to administrative action then, and to item 8A, a resolution authorization for transfer of appropriations, Kaiser Station Area B improvements. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, this is budget adjustment night. With this, the city owns land in Kaiser Station Area B that it intends to lease for an extended period of time. In anticipation of the lease, there are pieces of Kaiser Station Area B master plan that need to be completed, specifically engineering and construction associated with the driveway access, street widening, ride-in-out lanes, open space, and the block wall. These improvements are required to be completed under the proposed lease agreement. So, with that, we're recommending a transfer of appropriations from the Transportation Improvement Fund of up to $250,000 to cover those costs. This will be an interfund loan that will be repaid over five years as the lease payments associated with that property are received. The loan would be at 1.45% per year, which is the current rate that the Oregon State Treasury provides. The Transportation Improvement Fund has adequate resources that will not be needed during the term of the loan, so staff recommends that the city council approve the attached resolution authorizing an appropriation transfer in interfund loan to complete the capital improvements in Kaiser Station Area B. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right, are there any questions on the staff report, on the interfund borrowing? So, this, we do this, instead of borrowing from another institution which may have higher rates, we're able to use funds and pay them back with interest.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. If we were to go out and try to get private financing or do a public offering to pay for something like this, we're probably looking at the five to six percent interest rate compared to 1.45%, so, plus, plus fees and a lot of headache.
And there aren't any projects right now for which those funds, the transportation funds are designated, so that won't set us behind in any match or obligated projects. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for transfer of appropriations, Kaiser Station Area B improvements.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for transfer of appropriations, Kaiser Station Area B improvements. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 8B, a resolution authorization for supplemental budget, water-to-water facility transfer. City manager.
I'm not really sure why I'm here tonight, Tim.
You're directing.
Well, this is the final adjustment. The adopted budget for fiscal year 2017-18 provided for $440,000 in appropriations in the water facility fund to provide for the ongoing water main replacement projects that are outlined in the water system master plan. Based on the bids we've received, the actual cost will probably be closer to $465,000. So, this request is to increase the transfer from the water fund to the water facility fund because the water fund has appropriations that are not anticipated being used during the year. So, this is really just an early transfer of money to the water facility fund from the water fund. So, with that, staff recommends that city council approve the attached resolution, resolution authorizing an appropriation transfer of $25,000 from the water fund to the water facility fund. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right, are there any questions on the staff report? So, we do these, what we do is when we pay our water bills, part of that is with the intention of being able to repair and maintain our system, and this is one of those projects. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Our, our fee structure is really set up that we're supporting the ongoing maintenance repairs of our water system as we go. This helps us in that we don't have to take out a lot of large debt instruments at any given time, which can be costly over the life of the system. We're in a really good spot with our water system overall, so.
Okay, appreciate that, and that's all outlined in our master plan over time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if I remember correctly, the water master plan is on our website if people would like to read that and see what our projects are and how we plan ahead. So, it's great reading, okay, I like that kind of stuff. That's why I'm here. All right, are there any other questions or comments? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, an authorization for supplemental budget, water-to-water facility fund transfer.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorization for supplemental budget, water-to-water facility transfer. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Item 8C, an ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702, an ordinance number 2016-747, and then an ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743. Here we go again. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As the council knows and for the audience's sake, we have two different processes for medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana is called medical marijuana, but marijuana retail, recreational is called the marijuana retailer permit process. Kaiser has a little stricter background check requirements for anybody involved in those businesses than the state does, but part of, part of that ends up, and we, we found it true a few months after we passed those, we had to tweak that because we ran into a situation where an applicant honestly answered on the application that they had a minor possession of marijuana charge, which wasn't accepted even though you could deliver and sell marijuana in the last two years and you'd still be allowed. So, it didn't really make a lot of sense, and I'm not sure how that error was in there. I think it had, had to do with trying to jive our local requirements in the states. So, this change would, you know, in my opinion, kind of makes sense if you're gonna accept out possession and delivery convictions that are over two years old, then the same thing should apply to possession of marijuana convictions that are over two years old. So, these ordinances make that change because they are two separate ones, they need to be read separately, but I don't have an additional staff report for the second ordinance. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702, and Ordinance Number 2016-747.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance 2017, amending the ordinance adopting the Kaiser Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2014-702, and an ordinance number 2016-747. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance 2017, amending ordinance adopting the Kaiser Marijuana Retailer Permit Process, Amendment of Ordinance Number 2016-743. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us to the consent calendar. Council President Parsons, what do we have on deck tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on deck tonight. One is a Resolution R. 2017, authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Pacific Excavation Inc. for Water Main Replacement Project 2017-2018, and item B is approval of the November 20th, 2017, regular session minutes.
Do we have any polls? Council President Parsons.
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar.
Second? The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us to council liaison reports, and I will go ahead and pick on Counselor Anderson to start us off tonight.
All right, thanks, Madam Mayor. Aside from Thanksgiving, not much going on this past week, but a lot coming up this week. As we all probably are aware of, we've got the tree lighting this Tuesday at the, that would be December 5th at about seven o'clock, I believe, six o'clock, I meant to say, and however, I believe Santa Claus will be arriving at seven, at least, that's the rumor. And then the parade, of course, this Saturday is, that does get started at seven, right before that, see, I can count and watch at the same time, will be the jingle dash, and that'll get underway at six o'clock, so, now, so.
I know.
The other big issue is, I can count and chew gum at the same time. The other thing that's going on, of course, is concert season, that's launching as well. I won't be at the tree lighting ceremony Tuesday because I'm going to be at the Whittaker Middle School Orchestra Concert that starts at seven o'clock that same evening, so, for, I think, the second year in a row that I've been aware of that, that conflict has existed, so unfortunately. And I'm sure there are other concerts, I, matter of fact, I know there are, but outside of the Kaiser area, I'm more aware of those than, than McNary, and I'm sure Counselor Reed will fill us in on that one, or those sets. Big one I want to point out to everybody is the Whittaker Middle School Choir is going to be putting on their annual kind of December annual, kind of, December holiday production. It's called "The Season of Love." It's going to be down at Salem Alliance Church. And, and the show starts at seven o'clock. They'll be running Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Some of us were familiar when it was in another format, when it was called the cabaret. And, but I can just tell you, they do an absolutely outstanding job. Their longtime choir teacher, Andy Thomas, is just an outstanding music educator, and just has done a phenomenal job leading that program. I just cannot say enough about Mr. Thomas. So, he's a great guy. You are interested in going to those, that concert, it does help out the choir, choir program at, at Whittaker. It's recommended you go to Eventbrite online and search for Whittaker Choir, because then you'll for sure get yourself a ticket and a seat. Otherwise, you're going to have to try and buy one at the door, and I can guarantee you those lines are long, and there's no guarantee you'll get in. So, there's that. And then, I'm sure, I believe there's, there may still be, I'm not sure if there's a musical still going on at McNary or not, but I know that there is one down at South Salem High School, because someone's daughter happens to be part of the cast there. So, I just encourage you all to go down to that musical. It's outstanding. They do a great job. They got shows Thursday, Friday, and Saturday when it concludes, as I am concluding now. Thank you.
So, so are you telling us that the young people in our community are amazingly talented and enrich our cultural fabric, both now and going into the future?
Absolutely.
Fabuloso.
And thankfully, we've got, I just have to put a shameless plug here, to really just support our educators, especially the music educators. We've just got an outstanding group across the entire district, and I'm just very thankful that our school district is so supportive of our, of our kids and our music educators.
And our parents. This, this doesn't happen without a lot of parent and grandparent and other significant adult support. I was an orchestra kid myself, and kids who are in music, in sports, and other, and I wouldn't call them extracurricular, these are co-curricular activities that really set them up for long-term success. So, I'm glad you keep on, keeping us in the know on, on these great events.
Yeah, thank you. And if I might, I, I can't underscore what you're saying enough, because I can tell you for a fact that some of these kids go to school before school even starts. So, like, some, in some cases, like, they get started at 6:30 in the morning, in some cases. So, they are dedicated kids.
They are. Thank you so much. Counselor Herrera?
Counselor Anderson said pretty much everything I was going to say. The parade, let's see, the lights, tree lighting, okay. Oh, yeah, we had a very eventful Thanksgiving. It was with the community, my family. Also, he forgot to mention one thing, I'm going to get right into it. Our Cal Club, which is our fourth and fifth grade leadership club in Kennedy Elementary, has been doing some wonderful stuff, and we have a special speaker this Thursday. Counselor Anderson will be coming talking to our, our leadership club. And also, we will be, some of the things that we'll be doing this year, which is pretty exciting, we'll be going to Willamette University, and we're going to go up to the Capitol, and tour the Capitol, and see what, see what the governor's doing. So, the other thing I was going to say is, we, we had a nice civil war. I thought that was pretty good.
You can tell which side he rooted for, just saying?
I think it was 169 to 10, or something like that. Wait, 69 to 10. And I'll be going to Las Vegas for the Las Vegas Bowl. So, Olivia can't make it because she's got jury duty. So, I'll be going solo. So, I guess, also, I wanted to congratulate our retired, is it lieutenant or chief? They call it chief on that.
Deputy Chief. Are you talking about Randy Jackson at Kaiser Fire District?
Yeah. He had his event this weekend that I couldn't make, we were gone. But, he, just, just on a separate note, not only does he do a lot with the fire department, he has been a great volunteer in other aspects, whether it's sports, when the kids were young, he was a good help with Little League and other, other of our activities, community activities back when I was involved. So, and that's pretty much all I have. I just hope everybody has a fun time at the parade, and please be safe and look out for kids, because, you know, sometimes it's dark out there, and some kids are wearing dark clothes for some reason. But be careful out there, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Hopefully, they'll put lights on, because this is the light parade.
Yep.
But absolutely, well said. Council President Parsons, what you got?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I won't talk about the parade since that's been talked about, or the Christmas tree since that's been talked about. What I will talk about, though, is on Saturday, this last Saturday, the Gubser Miracle Lights, you know, has begun. And so, I, along with Councillors Reed and Ryan and the mayor, we handed out candy canes and collected a lot of food and money for a good cause, Marion County Polk and Food Share. So, that was a lot of fun. So, if you haven't had a chance to go through the lights, they're, they're pretty amazing every year. Also, coming up, we have our stakeholder interviews on Wednesday. I have Planning Commission at 6:00 on Wednesday, so it's the first Wednesday this month and not the second. Is that correct? That's what I'm reading.
Yes, it is this Wednesday.
Okay.
But we actually have you scheduled, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So, you, you, you have your own schedule.
I have my own schedule.
Special.
I'm special. Okay, so, we'll talk about that.
But we can, we can talk about that. So.
Okay.
In fact, yeah, we'll talk.
Okay, thank you. Then, on Thursday next week, we have Marion County Commissioners' Breakfast. I have it with Councillors Ryan and Herrera. So, just let me guys know if you can't be there, so we can get someone to be there in your, in your place. And the, see, and I just want to mention, I don't know if you guys have read lately in the, on Facebook, in the Kaiser Oregon area, but we sure have a lot of new businesses coming to Kaiser. And they're all exciting. Of course, we get another coffee place. But I'd rather see a, a business that thrives on vacant lot than the vacant lot. So, we all just need to embrace that new, I think it's called the Black Rock Coffee. We have a new laundromat over at Schoolhouse Square.
McQuimber's Run.
Wait, what?
McQuimber's Run.
Oh, new mixer restaurant. Casa Migas opened, yes. Yeah, that opened up. That's very nice inside, if you haven't been there. So, there's going to be probably a few more Kaiser stations almost. I mean, that hotel is, is up, and so, anyway, where it's the holiday season and all these things are coming, and so we just need to embrace that Kaiser is, is moving forward, and we didn't let anything stop us. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Very exciting. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I participated in the Heritage Center Christmas decorating. That was a lot of fun. That is nice and festive now, over there. And so, that's exciting to see. And there will be a Heritage Board meeting coming up on December 12th for, and there are some interesting things afoot with, with, with that. So, that will be fun. And this evening, before this meeting, I went to a Health Department Community Engagement meeting, where the County Public Health Department was getting input on a variety of perceptions and needs. And I learned a whole lot about public health, and that was very interesting. There are a whole lot of different holiday events, not only with community, but also with churches and so forth. So, I would just encourage you, there's something to do virtually every night. And so, just, just, just be involved in the holiday season in whatever way you can, because there's lots going on. And similarly, there's also lots of opportunities for service. So, many, many organizations need your help, and so if you can be active in searching those out, searching out those opportunities, we will all continue to make our community better. In terms of the McNary concerts, which I, I have been challenged, and we'll take that up, Sam, were you going to address that, or shall I? Sam, are you going to address that, or shall I? Okay. All right. So, tomorrow, the McNary Choir is putting on a coffee shop activity, which, if you've never been to those, those are really amazing. The Choir students, in the studio productions class in particular, they, they write their own songs, they write their own music, they mix and, there's just some really amazing things going on. And so, they use those as a fundraiser, I believe it's $5 to get in, but really some quality entertainment there. And that is going on tomorrow night. And then, we have the Orchestra Holiday Concert on December 7th, which is Thursday at 7:00 PM. And then, the Choir Holiday Concert is December 12th at 7:00 PM. And then, the Band Concert is December 14th at 6:30. So, they are all, it used to be that, that they did those all in conjunction with each other, but this year, they are all separately celebrating in their own ways. So, so that's something to, to, it's a little bit different this year, but it's something that we'll be looking forward to. So, I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counselor Freeman?
I know we've talked about the tree lighting, but I want to put a shout out to Dave Wallery and all the elves that decorated the tree on Saturday morning, and also to our sponsors that are sponsoring the event. I know a couple of them are new businesses to our community, and like Counsel President Parsons says, we need to support those businesses because they in turn support events throughout our community, throughout the whole year. So, thank you to them. Pretty quiet month this month, I think, just due to the schedule of many people. But there will be no traffic, bikeways, pedestrian safety committee meeting this month, no West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting. But in January, they will resume, and it will be time again to look for additional board members and/or new officers. No Volunteer Coordinating Committee meeting this month. But we do have openings currently on several committees, so I want to let everyone know what those are. And the deadline for consideration is Wednesday, January 10th, to be considered for the January 18th meeting. So, we have one vacancy on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, and they meet usually on the fourth Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM. Parks Advisory Board, there is one vacancy, and they meet on the second Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Traffic Safety, Bikeways, Pedestrian Committee, there is one vacancy. We meet here at 6:00 PM on the second Thursday. The Stormwater Advisory Committee, there is one opening. I know here it says the meetings usually are lunchtime, but I know our next meeting is like 5:30. So, I, we're looking at changing those, I believe, too. And then, we are still seeking youth liaisons. As you heard earlier, we have the privilege of having two, two new youth joining our committees, but we still have other openings. So, we are anxiously awaiting that as well. I will not be here on our next council meeting, December 18th, because I'll be out of town for a work event. Personally, I attended the Capitol Tree Lighting. I've lived here most of my life and have never attended that event. It was wonderful. And speaking of choirs, the West Salem High School Choir sang at that event, and they were fabulous as well. And the rotunda there at the Capitol was packed with young and old, and everyone waiting for the arrival of Santa and Mrs. Claus and the famous tree lighting. So, I just want to put a shout out that the Capitol is open for you to go in and look at all the decorations, and they are open on Saturdays, too, from 10:00 to 2:00. So, if you can't make it in during the week, head on in there on Saturday. They've done a fabulous job. And again, all by volunteers as well. And then, for everyone, we were talking before, who's decorated your house, I just want to say, some of the houses around town are amazing with all the decorations. And I just appreciate looking at that, since mine are not up yet, but they're going to be. So, just thank you to everyone. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. Youth Counselor Hernandez, what do you have for us tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Week after next is winter break, December 18th, for two weeks. Looking forward to that. Last Saturday, I took the December SAT, which is going to be my last chance to try to hike up my score. This time, I actually studied. So hopefully, that will make a positive difference. I will find out, December 15th, what my score is. FBLA, we just had a resume building workshop at the College and Career Center. That was fun. There's a lot of good opportunities there to, for our students to learn about, you know, job interviews, resume building, and other things like that. In recent weeks, we went on a Portland State University trip. So, that was fun to look at their business school and opportunities for our students after high school. We are moving forward, trying to build partnership with the University of Oregon School of Business. We have a regional skills conference that we host at McNary High School. We hosted it last year as well. It's a big opportunity for McNary High School, because all of the FBLA chapters in our region will be coming to compete and attend workshops at McNary. That is on February 10th. It's going to be from like around 8:00 to 2:00, and we are looking for local business leaders for workshop presentations. So, about their careers, what paths they take to get to where they are, or just about professional skills, interviewing tips, et cetera. And we're also looking for volunteer judges. We have many competitive events, say, in economics, accounting. If you have a career in one of these types of field, we want to match that with the people who are going to be judging these events. Ms. Reed did this last year. So, she teaches public speaking, and she judged the public speaking event. So, we're trying to get appropriate people for these competitive events to make it a very helpful and enriching experience as students go on to the state competition. For Natural Honor Society, we are, continue to try to make a, a public outreach. I'm on the, the Public Outreach Committee. So, we're trying to find any ways we can serve our community and get the, our name known. So, we're looking for any volunteer opportunities available. So, come look for me. Thank you.
All right. And then, for, just so folks know, FBLA stands for?
Future Business Leaders of America. It's a career technical skills organization nationwide. We have a chapter here at McNary High School. It's very exciting.
And many of our students go on to compete regionally and nationally, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
And do very well. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things to add. Most of it's already been covered. Last week, I met with the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, otherwise known as SCATS. We approved the Public Participation Plan, and we are continuing to review projects, including our Wheatland Road Project, and get into the next step, which is the statewide transportation improvement plan. On last Monday night, I spent part of the evening with the Salem City Council in reference to the Homeless Initiative Program Manager Intergovernmental Agreement. You may recall that we have approved that agreement, and the Salem City Council also has signed that agreement with a 9-0 vote. I think that the collaboration that we have in our communities, that recognizing that working together, we can better serve the people in our community who are homeless or housing insecure. So, I'm looking forward to moving forward with getting that position filled, and continuing to build the network of care and support, and effective means to help people move into permanent housing. I met with the Council of Governments Executive Board on the 28th, and next year, I will be the Chair of that board. So, I'm looking forward to working with Sean O'Day, who is the new Executive Director, as that organization moves forward. That evening, on the 28th, we had two things going on at the same time. We had story polls, which is the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, still soliciting input from people on ideas, on what stories do we want carved into those two tree stumps, tall ones, out in front of the Civic Center for our story polls. And they got some great input from folks, as well as an unveiling of some of the concepts for the Meadows Park, which is a public park owned by the city, and has our oldest playground. So, this is the one that is in the most need right now of being replaced. All the other ones are newer, either brand new or have been replaced. This one is in dire need to be replaced. And so, we got input from neighbors. Some kids had some great ideas. I love that picture on the front page, by the way, with Mr. Lawyer and some of our young citizens, who wanted to share their ideas. Really excited about getting that not only in good repair, but also rebuilding the paths for ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility. So, looking forward to that going forward. Food Barrel, that was a lot of fun. What a great turnout. This community is so generous. And the, the money and the food that's donated is one of the biggest fundraisers, and I think the biggest fundraiser for the Marion Polk Food Share. So, I want to congratulate and thank all the people in Gubser for putting up with the traffic for two and a half weeks, and for people donating to the Marion Polk Food Share. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just also wanted to add to that, that the people who are, the, the neighbors who are orchestrating the donation, they put in a lot of time. We, we went one night. You know, a lot of organizations go one night, but there are basically, from what I understand, about three families who, who alternate that responsibility of supervising all of us volunteers. So, really big job, and just really wanted to thank them for, for doing that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Coming up, so the tree lighting is tomorrow night. On Wednesday, I have the Strategic Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors meeting with, looking at the strategic plan going into 2018. There are a lot of businesses coming, not just to Kaiser, but also to the Salem- A lot of businesses coming, not just to Kaiser, but also to the Salem Kaiser area. Most people are aware of Amazon building the distribution center. There are other businesses coming that are gonna be bringing a lot of jobs to the Salem Kaiser area. Very exciting times for our region. Thursday, I have MWAAC, which is, which is the Mid Willamette Area Commission on Transportation. We'll be looking at some of the projects for our three-county region that will be going forward with transportation. And then, of course, Saturday night, we have the parade. And next week, the Kaiser Heritage Center Christmas will be on Thursday, the 14th. I hope I have that date right. That is what I've got here. So, that takes us then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Ken?
Madam Mayor, City Council, it was fast times last week. The PERS Board met for the last time during 2017. The good news is, through October, the investment rate of return is about 12.5%, which is amazing. It'll have an impact on our rates in about six years. They released the preliminary rates for the cities, starting in fiscal year 2019, '20. Just the change in rates is gonna impact the city about $250,000. The general fund will be impacted about $180,000. So, in today's dollars, that's about one and a half police officers. So, not super great news, but not, not insurmountable at this point. It's pretty much in line with what we've been projecting in our long-range planning documents. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
A follow-up question on that, though. So, that is something that we've been budgeting for over time. We have the PERS costs that are in this year's budget. How much more is that than what we have been budgeting already? Or is this 180 on top of what we've been paying?
This 180,000 will be on top of what we're currently paying. This is just the impact of the change in rates. And we, we have seen this in the future, so we have been projecting it out, so it's not a, a big surprise. It's just painful to see it come to reality.
It's very painful. It's impacting our ability as a local jurisdiction to provide services and to use the dollars for services instead of going to the PERS play down. There was a report that just came out that if people are interested on the PERS unfunded actuarial liability from the state, the Governor's Task Force. So, if people want to learn more, if I remember correctly, it's on the Governor's website.
I believe you're correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Chief Teague.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I thought I'd let the council and the public know that, you remember the, remember the graffiti case from three weeks ago where they painted all over North Kaiser and Council Herrera's neighborhood? We've been working that diligently. Detective Lathrop and Sero, Jay Prohl, been working that diligently. We know who the bad guys are, and we know their motives, and so we anticipate wrapping that up shortly, and then it'll be made more public.
Fantastic news.
Mr. Lawyer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Pratt.
Just wanted to review the fact that on Wednesday, we're having all of the stakeholder interviews. Each of you as council members are scattered throughout the day because we can't have you all in the same room at the same time. So, and I will work with you on your individual schedule to make sure that it, it works out. And just so the public knows, what we're doing in this grant is, we're starting with stakeholder interviews, selected individuals from the community to try and set the perspective for our consultants about our community attitudes, about growth, and about impacts, and the things that growth brings. That will be followed up by two open houses for the general public. So, these meetings, except for the Planning Commission, we're actually having the Planning Commission interviewed by our consultants, and that will be on Wednesday night. That will be a regular meeting. That will be a public meeting, but it will not be taking public testimony because the focus is on getting the interview from the Planning Commission. The time for public input will be in the future, open houses that we will have, and those will be advertised, and we will encourage and plead with the public to come to those open houses. We don't have the dates for those yet set, but we anticipate those will be in sometime in January. So, I will be contacting you, and tomorrow, based on a lot of discussion we've had from the people participating, we are going to send out to you an outline of what the discussion is going to be so that you can share that and ponder that and be prepared for the kinds of, of discussion that, that the consultant will be asking. So, and again, that's from Wednesday, basically from 12:00 through 8:00. That's all I've got.
City Attorney Johnson, other lawyer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Written communication, I've got a couple of items tonight. One is from Richard Hughes regarding the Willamette Valley Scenic Bikeway. Mayor Clark and City Councilors, thank you for your past support of the Willamette Valley Scenic Bikeway. As you know, tourism has become a significant part of the local economy. Last year, approximately 20,000 cyclists toured the bikeway, and about half that number lodged at least one overnight. Your continued support of the bikeway designation helps provide an economic vitality to the Willamette Valley. I very much appreciate your support. Richard Hughes from the Willamette Valley Scenic Bikeway. So, want to thank him for that, and also that we received an honorable mention as a bicycle-friendly city. Our Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee worked very hard on the application, and we've been able to add things like the Bicycle Repair Station and other improvements to our bikeways system this year. So, wanted to share that. I also received, we all received, a letter from Mr. Scott Shearer to Mayor Clark and members of the City Council. Thank you for taking time to review my comment. At the recent Volunteer Coordinating, Volunteer Committee meeting, the committee reviewed both mine and Matt Lawyer's application for an appointment with the City Planning Commission. This is my third application for appointment to the Planning Commission, once a few years ago, once in August 2017, and again in November 2017. During the interview process, I learned that Matt is already a member of the Parks, Kaiser Parks Board. It was brought up that this would be his second appointment, and was asked by the committee if he would be able to maintain the schedule needed to meet both commitments, which he said he would be able to do. The committee then voted to appoint Matt to the Planning Commission. I want to be clear, I'm not complaining that something was done incorrectly or that Matt was not qualified. I think he's a good choice and has a background that will fit well. I also understand the Kaiser City Council Rules of Procedure, Section 17, Creation of City Committees, Boards and Commissions, and Council Committees, and Ad Hoc Task Forces, subsection 3, Qualifications, Allow Appointees to Serve Up to Two Committees, et cetera. My concern that this, is that this could be limiting to new and fresh voices who are willing to participate in the city of Kaiser, especially when someone already has a voice at the table, so to speak. In this case, instance, Matt now has a voice on both Parks Board and Planning Commission set of two different perspectives. Please note my choice to apply to only the Planning Commission was a deliberate one. I felt it fit both my background and interests in the city. As such, I did not apply, nor I'm interested in joining another committee. As I don't want to be someone who just makes a statement and leaves it without a possible solution, I offer a suggestion. Add a caveat to section 17.3 that if more than one person is up for an appointment to a committee, the applicants have reasonably similar, similar qualifications, and one of those persons is already serving on another committee, that the application, applicants be given priority. At this point, after three tries, it is highly unlikely I will seek another volunteer position, and will be focusing my efforts in other arenas. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Scott Shearer. So, I appreciate Mr. Shearer taking his time to share his well-thought-out, you know, recommendations and his experience, and I know he's also quite involved in other areas of our community in volunteering, which so many people in our community are, and I appreciated that. And I did email him back in that regard and thanked him. So, I'd like to refer this to Councilor Freeman to take to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for discussion, if you would do that. All right. Council Freeman is our liaison to that committee. And that is all I have for written communications. Agenda input, we have a council work session for next Monday, but we are going to cancel. We don't have a topic for that, and as we've all noted, there are lots of things going on in our community right now. On December 18th, we will meet at 7:00 in regular session, and then on January 2nd, which is a Tuesday, we will then convene in the New Year at 7:00 PM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right. Seeing nothing additional, it is 8:21, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.